Okay, here you go Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the May tenth Tenino City Council Work Session. Let the record show that all council members are present. Today on the work session agenda, we have State of the City Address from Mayor Fournier. That's me, if you didn't know that. I did a State of the City Address at the most recent Chamber of Commerce meeting, and it was requested that I present the information here, so I'll give it my best shot. Okay, so...
So if you just click on the number one on the work session, it should go right to you.
Okay, should. Nope. Let's see what happens. Nope, that's not what we want to do. We want to go... To... The PowerPoint. So the PowerPoint presentation is available on the city website for anybody in the audience who wants to find it, share it, read it, print it off, whatever. You go to the city website, and then you go to... Where do you go? Official Publications. It's kind of hidden. Under Official Publications, you go to... News. Under News, you'll see State of the City PowerPoint. And then, you can watch it to your heart's content at home. And where's the little... How do I go to... Insert Image, Format, Slide Tools, View, Slideshow? There we go. Ha ha! Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the 2022 State of the City PowerPoint presentation, brought to you by the City of Tenino, presented by Mayor Wayne Fournier. Our outline, we're going to go over city stuff, park stuff, wastewater treatment plant stuff, agriculture and innovation park stuff, and other stuff. Some of this is relevant more to the chamber, so I may breeze through it. The city budget, over the past six years, Tenino's revenue streams have steadily increased. Property values have increasingly improved. Several once vacant properties have been renovated and vacant lots are being developed. The city will continue to promote infill and encourage active versus passive land ownership. So vacant lots, we want to see something going on with them. So we will devise ways to encourage landowners to develop their lots, because people need homes. Sales tax revenue has more than doubled in the past two years. This is a good thing for us. This is due in part to a more active and robust business climate, and new laws allowing local jurisdictions to capture online retail sales tax. Additional revenue will be discussed in the wastewater treatment plant segment. The political landscape, the City of Tenino administration and the council have been a stable and effective group for nearly the past seven years. We have weathered difficulties large and small and shown patience and grace while doing so. Our innovative ideas, steady leadership, and bold actions have been held up as examples to the entire world and have led to our policies literally being memorialized by the Smithsonian and preserved in the National Record. This is no small achievement. Our leadership, which includes everyone here, and continues to grow and increase in its influence regionally, ensuring our city has leaders on various boards and commissions. I want to thank the council for serving on the various boards and commissions and helping spread Tenino's influence and making sure that we're at the table when decisions are being made. Tenino's leaders have effectively built strategic relationships throughout the region. The many people in this room and our guests are examples and evidence of this. The many active advocates of our community and its vision are the reason that Tenino's never overlooked and often included. Here, City Hall, 2021, 2021 and 2022 marked a year of significant achievement with our facilities. Our City Hall is a great landmark. It has been at its present locations since 1922 and is Thurston County's only historic city hall. Thanks to an approximately $550,000 state budget appropriation, we've been able to successfully renovate and preserve the building, improving its usefulness and ensuring its longevity for several more generations. We tastefully renovated both floors, creating an aesthetic in the council chambers that is reminiscent of the period the building was first constructed, and also integrating modern upgrades. The downstairs has been opened up, additional workspace has been created, and the results speak for themselves. In 2022, after about six months of working with interim chief John Hutchings, we hired a new Tenino police chief, Robert Otterer. He joined us and has been working tirelessly. He has renegotiated and proved upon our contract for SRO. He has brought in additional officers that we lost, some due to attrition, and he has ensured a stable organization as he plans for the organization's future. Inviting, this is about the chamber. City streets continue to be a difficult issue. Unlocking the riddle of the street improvements and maintenance continues to be a difficult subject. We are diligent about maintenance and pothole management, but we must realize that roads are in a constant state of degradation, and many were poorly built to begin with. We will continue to look for funds to support our infrastructure. The city itself does not independently produce the revenue that is needed for actual road construction. So roads are expensive. We don't have the tax base to make the money, to bring in the money to just maintain and build roads. The math just isn't there. In the next few months, you will see Ritter Street Project begin. This will be a complete rebuild, create sidewalks, and more of a neighborhood feel that is more pedestrian focused. Here we have an engineer drawing of what we're going to be doing at Ritter Street. If you see... This is Ritter Street going south. And traditionally, and now, it's a straight shot through to Park Street. We'll be closing that off. We don't feel that through traffic is appropriate for the neighborhood, and it wears down our roads unnecessarily and kind of promotes like non-residential traffic, where we get commercial traffic and stuff going through there. And we want to do everything we can to keep the commercial traffic on State Route 507 Sussex. City housing and zoning, we're in a housing crisis. Everybody knows this. Costs have gone up dramatically, inventory is low, and Tenino needs to plan more effectively. I have asked the planning commission to review our zoning scheme with an eye for where we allow multifamily development. I believe that we have a deficit for multifamily, and it creates an absence in the housing scheme that shows in our demographics. We virtually have no residents between the ages of 22 and 35, and low to moderate income family homes are becoming difficult to afford and find. Tenino City Park, in 2022, we have an aggressive plan to invest in our park. The City of Tenino has 50 acres of parkland, and we view it as one of our greatest assets and opportunities. We see our park as an economic driver, a tool that builds community bonds, and a social, physical, and mental wellness center. With the planned improvements, we will be the premier trailhead for Thurston County Trail System and a regional, if not statewide, destination for outdoor recreation of all sorts. Tenino Quarry House and Community Center, we are currently renovating the quarry house. The project is being funded through CDBG funds. The end product will be an updated facility that will have a fully functional commercial kitchen. The kitchen facility will be available to citizens and also support the senior citizen food programs for South Thurston County. The Depot Museum, we've taken on the task of repainting and refurbishing some of the interior and windows of the depot. The funding is coming from City Coffers and Thurston County Heritage Grant Program. It looks great in there, by the way. Take a look. Caboose Project is pretty much done. We started in 2020, where we purchased a 1923 Great Northern Caboose. This project is now completed through what I can only describe as divine providence, when Don Bowman and Jan showed up to reconstruct the entire caboose from the frame up. We now have a showpiece that is amazing. It's world-class and celebrates the region's history as a train stop alongside our Depot Museum. The city and the South Thurston County Historical Society are working together to create a railroad celebration in September. Don Bowman, our train builder and historian, is someone that it would be great to have interviewed by the paper, presenting at any meetings, coming to the chamber. And can I announce that Jan and... Is that... Nope. No, we're going to keep that secret. George is sleeping. Am I lulling you all to sleep? My calm, soothing voice. Tenino Park Coordinator, in 2022, we created a new staff position that we are calling the Park Coordinator. This stands for Parks, Arts, Recreation, and Culture. This position is tasked with coordinating on matters of park, organizing community classes and events, assisting in park facility administration, and working with the newly formed Creative Arts District efforts. The position was staffed with an established member of our community, Ms. Jessica Reeves-Rush. While she is new to the position, the position itself is new. She has taken charge of the concept and is making great progress. Tenino Quarry Pool, I've stated it several times here. We do not believe we'll be open in 2022. Maybe if the kiddie pool gets done, we could come up with something, but... But it's just not feasible. The Department of Health has stated, so Peter Barno met with Department of Health yesterday and was trying to like kick the tires and light the fires. And they said that they will have our report, our permit done in three to six weeks. So that will give us, and there was some confusion. They thought we were building a new pool. We had to clarify that we are renovating the existing pool. And they've got like 10 permits in the hopper. They've got new staff coming on. They're working from home, all kinds of reasons or slash excuses. Yeah, excuses. But they said no less than three weeks, no more than six weeks. They are going to try and hurry it along. That permit will just allow us to begin construction. We have somebody in contract, but as this permit drags on, it messes with their scheduling. So we're really trying to do what we can. If that construction starts, that doesn't mean it's going to be done in time for pool season. And then, and so we're working on it. I'm meeting with a pool architect coming this next week, and we're going to work on Phase Two, which is designing the lakeside. So when I gave this presentation, we added $225,000 in the bank to complete Phase One, requested $550,000 from CDBG funds, and we were awarded 500, approximately 500,000. So that money is now secured. So we are secured for Phase One and Phase Two, which we'll talk about here in a sec. But we have to improve these facilities. Phase One, as you all know, we technically have a pool and a lake, which are delineated by the chain link fence. The bottom portion in the picture is the pool. This is regulated by Department of Health. The other portion is considered an inland lake. The term inland lake seems weird to me, because aren't all lakes, right? All lakes are inland, right? Is there an outland lake? How does that work? I don't know. Yeah, yeah. We do not have an ocean here in Tenino. Not yet. Phase One includes structural upgrades to the pool portion that would allow for more efficient water maintenance of that side. It will decrease the volume of water and also provide for better filtration, improved dry horizontal space. So I've told you all how it works here before. You've got two bodies of water separated, but right now by a small wall of concrete. The pool side has to be drained. It's got chemicals in it. It's got chlorine. It's got all the things that a typical pool gets. And so that water, when it gets used, because it's a horrible filtration system, that water has to be drained twice a month. That's a lot of water in that pool side, a whole bunch of water. That's got to all be drained, flushed out. And now you've got water in the lakeside, and then you've got a difference in pressure. When this water's down and the level of the lake is up here, and there's just a little flimsy wall in between it, the hydrostatic pressure will crush the wall. So you have to drain the lakeside, which, this is a lot of water. This is really a lot of water. So you've got, you know, 6 million gallons that we have to like flush out down the drain twice a month to operate these things. That's a crazy amount of money and a crazy amount of water. So the structural upgrades will include... Going from a wall, we'll be changing that wall in between them. See where the chain link fence is? That will turn into a big, like five-foot concrete walkway. So it's going from a wall to a big walkway out to a large deck. So where this kind of, this kick out, where you see the chain link fence go boop, 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 it will turn into a deck, a sun deck, that, you know, people can sit on and enjoy the sun and kind of go in and out of the water. Additional upgrades will be splash pads, splash features, spray features. And then there will be a kind of a decrease in the depth of the pool, so less water and more like out-of-water features. Some of the suggested spray features that we've been looking at include things like these. These will be in the water. These things make kids like go bananas. It'll be wild. Phase Two, lack of water level horizontal spaces. We feel it's a negative. It's negative for the pool experience. So if you ever go to a pool at a resort, I know we're not, you know, the wind in Vegas, but if you go to the pool, most of the humans at the pool are sitting outside the pool, like looking at the pool. So that's just, that's just what people do. They're not all in there swimming. The way our pool is designed right now, there's, you go up to it, and there's like a three-foot drop-off, and then there's a 100-foot depth of water. So you go in the water, you get really cold, you freak out, and then you jump out of the water. You don't just like tread water for like three hours a day. So there's nowhere, there has been nowhere for anybody to kind of hang out on the edges. So we're, in Phase Two, we'd be adding floating docks. We would improve on the concrete surfaces that are there by putting in like these resins that go over the top of it, and you can do designs and colors. Putting in a concession stand, putting in a floating dock, and putting in a natural sand filtration system, as well as upgrading the pumps and the lines that move water up to the waterfall. Park Playground, City of Tenino will embark on one of its most ambitious projects yet through a $515,000 capital budget appropriation in 2022 state budget. Along with local funds, we will realize a long-sought goal. Beginning this next month, beginning this month, we should see installing some of the new first pieces to the playground. Right now, if you go by Parkside Elementary, you'll see a bunch of dirt dug out. That is the location where the current toys that were destroyed in the windstorm will be pulled up in the next few weeks and rebuilt along with a bunch of new parts in the Parkside old playground area. So we'll have those old toys going up there, and then we'll start bringing in our new toys for the playground project. The summer, we will do most of the groundwork. This will include adding asphalt pads and an asphalt trail. So if you see the red trail space, that will be actual asphalt trails that are added going around the perimeter of the park. Trail will invite trail users to explore our park, providing a running, walking path and allow for a better experience in largely unused portions. This is the area where the playground and pump track will be being placed. This is a drawing of what the layout will most likely look like. The pump track is, I want to say, 523 feet of actual track. And then you've got multiple large play structures of varying ability, size, age range, and function. The main feature for the playground will be this thing called the Explorer Dome, made by Compan. It's pretty cool. It's about 20 feet high, and you can fit somewhere around 60 kids in it at a time. There it is in use. It's pretty impressive. There'll be other features, like freestanding slide. And we've gone from, you know, ladders to rope ladders, and we're trying to, you know, do things that are unique. Same with the climbing wall. It's all going to be kind of themed around these ropes. And these ropes are, they're actual cables that are covered in nylon. So you can't cut through them. There's things like this. This thing is cool. This coconut rope swing. There'll be a bank of swings with various styles of swings. So like the, you know, there's this thing right here where you can have an adult and a child swinging together. There's like this little swing nest thing. There's some traditional swings, baby swings. Our specific goals, we have set out in our choice and designs to ensure a wide range of ages and abilities. Much of the equipment is accessible and usable by people in wheelchairs and ages ranging from 2 to 82 could enjoy these things. Some adult fitness equipment. The pump track. So you'll see that it's a continuous track, and you have, but you have three separate tracks of varying skill, ability. A pump track is a circuit of rollers, bank, turns, and features, designed to be ridden completely by riders pumping, generating momentum by up and down body movements instead of pedaling or pushing. Our pump track will include 523 feet of ridable track and be a first of its kind in the U.S. in its design and unique in its placement and integration into the playground and greater amenities. These things are very popular, and they attract, you know, very family-oriented crowds. It's a very community-family-friendly experience for people of varying levels of ability and mode. Wastewater Treatment Plant, we aim to reduce costs and improve the facility as a fully sustainable plant. That process, that processes waste to its completion and also is a resource locally for septicage companies. In 2021, we opened our septicage receiving line, allowing local haulers to offload at our plant where we can ensure responsible processing and also capture additional revenue. In 2022, we announced our five-year goal of ensuring our facility treats waste to its chemical completion and will allow for us to return the nutrients in that waste to the community as a soil additive, likely through creating an onsite composting process. Our goal is to have a community that promotes farm-to-table and also promotes table-to-farm. We feel that this complements the ag/park vision as well. The wastewater treatment plant will efficiently and effectively process and convert biosolids to the point that they can be distributed. We will also make our reclaimed and treated Class A water available for commercial uses. The Ag in Innovation Park, the Tenino Ag and Innovation Park was conceived of as a concept several years ago, and we, alongside with our partners at the ADC, the Port, the State of Washington, and Thurston County, have invested blood, sweat, and tears and treasure to get to the point we're currently at. Our business model will be much like that of a port, where the city owns and leases the land, and we work with public and private partners to provide buildings. You should expect pad development to occur this summer, with us going vertical as the pad develops. We're becoming increasingly confident in this timeline. By the day, we're making improvements, making forward movement. Tenino Ag and Innovation Park, the primary goal of the facility is to support the ag economy regionally through creating infrastructure, training, and support for the ag industry and local producers. The site will include retail space for value-added and locally-made ag products, as well as space for commercial processing, as well as research and development. And these are kind of some conceptual drawings or pictures of some of the potential designs and looks and feels of what it would be like out there. Here we have a mock-up of the first pad, which you can expect to see development on soon. There's an architectural rendering of what the first building may look somewhat like.
Five minutes?
There'd be several spaces in that.
Yep, and in this building, there would be multiple tenants. Approximately 20,000 square feet. Here you see what a total build-out would look like. I anticipate Building A and Building B being constructed within the next year to year and a half. Other big things, be aware, this is more for the business community, but be aware and in concert with our law enforcement and code enforcement efforts. We want a safe and clean city, but we want to work together as a community on it. The city has an aggressive agenda. I encourage the chamber to invite various staff in to present on different aspects of what we are doing, and I gave suggestions. Other big things we talked about was the Tenino Ranch. So this is a big project that's going on, and it's an exciting project that we need to be aware of and working alongside and in concert with. I encourage the chamber to know what they're doing and figure out ways in which they can market their business to the guests. They state they will have sometimes 3,000 to 4,000 guests on a weekend. That's doubling, that's tripling the size of the city. I encourage everyone to work together so that we can ensure we are building a better future for our city and our children. We should all be selling the idea of what Tenino is and what we want it to be. And in order to that, you have to believe in it. That is... My presentation. Does anyone have any questions? Are there any questions from the chamber? Or chamber that count? Or chamber that count? Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Tenino City Council meeting. Let the record show that all city council members are present. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. We have an agenda before us needing approval.
No approval.
Second.
Did that come through? It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to the meeting minutes.
No approval.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes for the 4/26 meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. That brings us to the consent calendar. This is a consent calendar consisting of April 26, 2022 through May 10, 2022. Hold on, it's not on here. I got it right here. I was a little slow getting online. Uh, payroll EFTs in the amount of $33,374.38. Claims checks number 30574 through 30601. And EFTs in the amount of $90,617.49 for a grand total of $123,991.87. And no liquor cannabis license renewals.
No approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We have no executive session. Uh, we have a presentation tonight by the police chief, Chief Otterer, on commercial vehicle enforcement. Chief Otterer?
Mr. Mayor, any new council members? So in response to pu- the public and some of the council members who's been along the standard issue of commercial motor vehicle traffic through the city, um, I think it's safe to say that, that the city as a whole supports economic development and commerce. However, public safety is still at the forefront. So I reached out to our partners at the Washington State Patrol and organized a commercial motor vehicle enforcement event, and that went off on Wednesday the 4th, and it was a screaming success. So some of the statistics that we compiled and everything that could be rubbed through our local municipal court system was, uh, we took heatlight violations, five unsecured loans on commercial vehicles through the city, uh, one brake violation, a steering violation, one linkage shield violation, one commercial vehicle defective tires, and then five, uh, other defective equipment violations. There was one, uh, commercial driver that was texting while driving, uh, three safety belt violations, five, uh, citations for speeding, and probably another 15 warnings for excessive speed. Two insurance, uh, tickets were written, and two vehicles were caught running through the city grossly overweight. Uh, one warning device, and yet an operable emergency buzzer for an air braking system was discovered. Uh, one vehicle wasn't properly marked with the DOT numbers, uh, one licensing violations, three registration violations. There were six commercial motor vehicles that were discovered to have violations so egregious that they were placed out of service and weren't allowed to travel down the roadway until the defective equipment was corrected. So, um, the Commercial Vehicle Safety Alliance has a, uh, three different levels of inspection, one being just a cursory inspection and driver qualifications. Level two inspection is greater than that. Level three inspection is where you get a crawler out, you go under the truck, you measure the brakes, and look at all the nuts and bolts and steering systems. So a total of nine type-two inspections were performed, and 13 of the highest level inspections were performed. Um, so the feedback that we got from the, uh, State Patrol was, it was awesome. They loved the hospitality. We opened up our facility to them. In fact, throughout the week, they were here eating lunch, and, um, they want to come back, and we think that we're going to make this a quarterly enforcement event in the We thought about monthly, but once the word gets out that we're, that we're, that we're looking at commercial vehicles, traffic slows down. And again, we're really trying to be mindful, uh, with commerce and the economics, and we don't want, you know, hammer drivers too much, but we do want to keep public safety at the forefront, which is, uh, the whole purpose of enforcement is to increase safety. So, uh, any questions?
Thank you for doing that, appreciate it.
That's great. Yeah.
All right.
It's been a long time coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, chief. Sounds like a, that was an awesome success.
Yeah, it was great. We had a lot of activity in town that people heard and saw.
Yeah. That was great, thank you, thank you. Uh, public comment period. If there's any members of the public that would like to provide comment, please step forward and do so at this time. You'll be given three minutes. State your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Zach Lankstein, uh, 348 Sussex Avenue. I have the house next door, which is 324 also, and the lot behind the, the shop there. Um, I spoke with Dwayne before about this alleyway that I have behind there.
Is your, is your mic on?
I don't know.
There's a green light.
Put it so you're talking. Hello?
Is that better?
There we go.
Okay. All right, this is my first public speaking, so, um... Why I'm here, I suppose, is because, like what you were speaking on earlier about, um, like advocating for business being here, I'm trying to develop that back lot and fence it to where I can have my lots all in one spot, and it can be safely secured. I, I looked up the RCWs, and it says that, if I'm not mistaken, two-thirds of the people on, who are on like a, an alleyway like mine, that you have to have two-thirds in agreeance that you want to vacate the alleyway. And I have three-thirds right now that want to vacate the alleyway. So... I'm just trying to do that. I don't know how to go about doing it. Uh, I was referred to maybe get, uh, a real estate attorney, and he could help me through the process, but I wouldn't want to do all that if I don't have to. Um, I know, was it Tabitha who lives on the corner? Uh, she's tried to do this too, uh, to get it vacated, so we can stop having traffic come through, because it's just three houses that are on this entire block. And there's no real need for that if we can have the city having access to it whenever they need. Like I spoke to the chief the other day, when he came by, and he said, "Well, if I really need to get in here, I just run through the gate." You know, if the place is on fire, he's not really worried about it. Um, so... I don't know if I need to come back here on Thursday for you guys' planning meeting to see if I can try and figure out how to go about having a fence put around and through the alleyway to where I could, you know, use it as it's one piece of property, and I can have my facility secured and not have people walking through my backyard in the middle of the night. You know, it's, it is kind of just odd having randoms kind of cruising through there when you're not expecting it, so, um... I don't know, I guess, are you guys able to answer questions right now? So Thursday, would Thursday be a better day to come back to, to bring these, these questions up? I don't know. Yeah, so I'll, I'll try to be brief, but so you provide public comment. We, we work on what's on the agenda, because we have to put out to the public within, in advance what we're going to be talking about. So there's no items that are really supposed to be like dropped on us. But, uh, you know, we, we have been talking about this for a while. The Planning Commission is the place to go. And they have looked at your request before along with the, the city planner, and I know that you guys have had some correspondence. And I, so I would say that that discussion belongs at the Planning Commission meeting. Okay. But making everybody aware of your, you know, your desires is not a bad thing. So come here tonight and talking is not a bad thing. Okay, and that's Thursday at 7 o'clock here? Yep, it's on the agenda, it's on the city website, so the next meeting is 5:11 at s- is it 6 or 7? It's at 6 o'clock. Okay. And you guys have, uh, on, on your website, it is in your future business plans, uh, that were published in 2015, to have that entire section actually changed from residential to commercial. And that's part of the reason why I moved down here, is because I was under the impression, it was, this is five years after the fact in 2020, that, uh, I may be able to connect these dots, you know, and make my compound that I have kind of in my mind, which is just a fence with another shot back there. I understand. It's not even crazy, yeah. Okay. And, and bring that up there. I, I'll try and be more prepared. I've been busy today, but, so tomorrow I'll be back, and I'll just try and, you know, make some notes to where I'm just well-understood as far as what I want to achieve and like what you guys are, you know, I want to work with you. If you guys are able to have access, I just don't see... The city's, city's concerns or easements, access, and then like, you know, maybe 60 years from now, uh, future owners aren't interested in that kind of thing, so we have to look at it from that perspective too. It's, as long as there's, there's three lots there, so they, if somebody, if I choose to sell one to one person and two to the other people, then we can rip the fence down and fence the alleyway, and it will just, you know, anything can happen at that point. So, but for the time being, I don't see myself going anywhere else. Okay.
We have a very nice facility, by the way.
Thank you. Yeah, all right, thank you, thank you, Zach. Is there anyone in the public who would like to provide public comment?
So Joyce Worrell, uh, the Ironworks Boutique, 224 Sussex Avenue West. So, um, I am representing as chairperson for the Splash Bash Committee, and I just want to remind everybody again that the, uh, Splash Bash Auction that has been put off for two years because of COVID is now going to be May 21st. Uh, the, people need tickets to, uh, come, please. And, um, we are inviting the mayor to come and give his, his, uh, presentation of, of the park and the pool, uh, to, during that timeframe at the Splash Bash Auction.
You could be part of the entertainment.
I'm the entertainment.
You're the, you're part of the entertainment.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I stopped by to see the mayor the other day, and, and, uh, and we were talking about...
Just tried hitting you on the side.
Meetings, and I remembered that I had a meeting at 12 o'clock, and it was 12:01, and I better get myself down to the meeting that I was supposed to be chairing, so I didn't get to talk to you at that time, sir.
All right.
So the other thing is, um, your presentation, now I'm Chamber of Commerce Vice President, uh, your presentation that you gave to our chamber that day was, "I say, and I have been in many meetings over my life, army, civilian, community, uh, through my, um, lifetime, that was one of the best presentations I had ever seen."
Really?
And I am not, I am not just saying that. It was very interesting, it was very informative, it's what we needed to, to hear, and I, as representative of the, of the chamber, wish to thank you for taking your time to do that.
Thank you, that means a lot, Joyce, that really does.
Well, I'm saying heartfelt.
I believe you, thank you.
So, uh, the other thing I want to do is to thank the chief for doing what he's doing with the trucks going by. Myself as a business, uh, here in the center of Tenino, uh, listening to the screeching of tires and the, listening to the people that come into my store that have almost been hit by all of the cars that travel through so fast through our city, um, and the trucks that go by so fast and rattle my windows, I appreciate taking some effort on that part to do something about the trucks and the traffic that are going through Tenino.
That was a, that was impressive.
That was, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce.
Oh, one more thing. One of the other presentations that we're going to be having at Splash Bash Auction is a presentation by Johnny Appleseed. He will be there again. Uh, and that, and we have a new one, new presentation by Banana Man.
Banana Man.
Banana Man will be there in all his regalia, and I'm sure that people that spend their $50 for a ticket to improve our, our pool for all of our kiddies would appreciate seeing him being there. Thanks.
All right. Uh, we have no public hearing, we have no proclamation. Wait, we have a proclamation. Uh, this proclamation by the governor. This is amending proclamation 20-05. Rescinding proclamation 20-28. Uh, this is a proclamation by the governor of Washington, amending proclamation 205 and rescinding proclamation 20-28. Uh, whereas February 29, 2020, he issued proclamation 205, proclaiming state of emergency for all counties throughout Washington as a result of the coronavirus outbreak, whereas as a result of the continued worldwide spread of COVID-19, its significant progression in Washington State and the high risk posed to vulnerable populations. Whereas to enable public meetings to occur while maintaining the social distancing and limitations on in-person interactions necessary to curtail the spread of COVID-19 on March 24, 2020, he issued proclamation 20-28 prohibiting in-person meetings and waiving and suspending laws and rules concerning RCW 42 dot 56, Public Records Act, and RCW 42 dot 30, the Open Public Meetings Act that hindered conducting public meetings remotely and, uh, whereas, I got, we got the important stuff highlighted. During the 2022 regular legislative session, legislature passed and governor signed and gross substitute House Bill 1329, which in part authorized public agency governing bodies to hold public meetings remotely in certain circumstances and after a local, state, or federal state of emergency has been declared. And a whole bunch of words. Now therefore, I J. Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, as a result of the above-noted situation and under chapters 38 dot, dot, 08, 38 dot 52, and RC, and 43 dot 06 RCW, do hereby proclaim state of emergency continues to exist in all counties of Washington State, that proclamation 20-05 and all amendments thereto remain ineffective, in effect as otherwise amended and probably terminated and rescinded effective. So violators of this order may be subject to criminal penalties. So this is the update on the emergency declaration. We are in line, and we are doing things as we see we should be, and, uh, that is the latest from our governor. Yay, old business. City Council Retreat, uh, reached out to... Nah, it's, I mean, we, if we don't accept it, doesn't mean it doesn't exist. So we just wanted to acknowledge it and make sure everybody was aware. Old business, City Council Retreat, I reached out to Doug Ma, and he suggested the date of 6:25 and he suggested the date of six twenty-five twenty-two, it's marked in his calendar. Uh, I just wanted to discuss it and see if there's any like crazy objections to that date. Uh, if not, I'd like you guys to make sure you check your calendars and make the time. Uh, once again, this is something we do outside of the council chambers. It is a several hour event with presentations from Banana Man. Joking. With, uh, presentations on various subjects regarding, uh, city business. And it's a big visiting, visioning session and we have it led by, uh, the amazing Mr. Doug Ma.
Same place it's always been?
Most likely, we have not secured the facility. Uh, you know, things being what they are, I'm not sure what public facilities are available, but we will secure one for that day. Okay? What, what'd you say? Oh, yeah, I mean, it's good to, when you get outside of your normal environment, people interact differently. And we want to do like a, you know, it's a round table kind of thing.
Plus it's close to McConie's.
Plus it's close to McConie's. McConie's Sandwich Place, that's what Jason cares about. Okay, so. Yeah, typically, or, yeah, around there, you know, it's, it's an all day kind of thing with a lunch. Okay. New business, uh, so we are looking at new, uh, new contract for building services. Uh, just over a year ago, we signed on with Small Potatoes. And, uh, we are, we, there's been some changes in contract prices, uh, among other, you know, things, and so we're in the market looking at other, uh, building contract, uh, building service contractors and firms. Uh, there is one that I have asked for a draft contract from that we should have, I want it by tonight. But, uh, it should be coming in soon and it would have a large menu of services. Um, so I look forward to bringing that to you all. There is no action needed, but I just want to make you guys aware that that's something that's rattling around in my head. Uh, item nine, donation to Tenino Police Department from Nisqually Indian Tribe, the Nisqually Indian Tribe has graciously offered donation of some equipment. Chief, would you like to come in and come up and tell everyone about that? How you got there, what it is and what you'd like?
So the, uh, obviously I have some, uh, connections at the Indian Tribe, they're my former employer. So I reached out to them for some assistance and they graciously offered fifteen thousand dollars worth of equipment to the Tenino Police Department. Uh, that's in the way of tasers, which I think everybody knows what they are, it's a conducted energy device, a less lethal, um, device that we all carry. These are a, a new version, about, actually about three or four versions higher than what we currently have. And also, uh, the horizon looks like there's going to be a mandate for body worn cameras for all police officers. Currently, there are two new mandates in the state of Washington, I won't go into the details too much, but it involves uh, the recording of both au- audio and visually of in custody interrogations of suspects. So, in order to be in compliance with the new legislation, upcoming legislation and just best practices, they've offered, uh, body cameras for all of our police officers. We don't have policies for that yet, but that's something that I'm going to be working on, um, with the mayor. And we're going to come up with a policy and an implementation and get ahead of the game and, and get those cameras rolled out and new tasers issued. So.
Nice.
That's what we got.
So we need a motion from the council to accept the five fifteen thousand dollars in donation.
Second.
So move it seconded, is there any discussion?
Yeah, good question.
Uh, quite some time ago, I believe, uh, during the Locke administration, there was a law passed that says that the state cannot fu- uh, cannot enforce an unfunded mandate. Since these body cameras are going to be mandated, how are they going to be funded? This is obviously right now, but we're going to have to eventually upgrade those, so how are they going to be funded?
Wh- when the, when the mandate for body worn cameras rolls out, there are, there are going to be grants available for cities that don't have a very robust budget. Now what that's going to look like, I, I'm not sure. Um, however, the, the requirement to record conversations like interrogations, that doesn't have to be done on necessarily on these body worn cameras, that can be done in any fashion.
Yeah, but see, the other, the other part of that is if somebody does a, does a public records request, how are we going to fund the person that has to sit there to go through all of that? Because for, if I remember the numbers right, it takes about four or five hours to find, uh, a one minute segment.
So that's going to be part of the policy that's written, is what, what our policy for activating the camera is going to be. Because that's going to drive how much data we store. But the company Taser International has partnered with Axon. Axon and Taser kind of joined forces, Taser, uh, has developed the conducted energy device, less lethal, less lethal weapon. And Axon developed the camera systems. Both of those systems talk to each other. And what we would have to do when it becomes policy is, uh, contract with Axon to manage the data. And with that data management contract, uh, comes redaction services and things of that nature.
Okay.
So that's all in the works, I don't have any numbers for that yet, but, but at least we're getting the hardware started right now.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding this donation? I want to say thank you to the chief for his hard work and he's kind of, seems like he's on fire this week. So good job, thank you.
And there's more.
There's more, but wait, there's more! All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. That brings us to reports, Chamber of Commerce, let's do the, the George Sharp Hour.
Thank you Mayor and Council and, and there's more. I'll start with the chamber, next week on Wednesday, the eighteenth, this is going to be our, um, monthly luncheon. And Peter Obrano is going to come and give an update on what happened in the legislature and what he's forecasting for coming. We also have the VFW is going to come and give a presentation about Flag Day and what they're planning to do for that. Studies is going to be on next Friday, the twentieth. And location to be determined and still the guest speaker is to be determined, so we haven't set finalized on that. The Economic VMA Council, we have our Inspire Conference this Thursday.
Can you make sure the mic's on when you're speaking?
Is that better?
That's better.
Thank you. Do you want me to start over or just keep going?
It's up to you.
Keep going.
Thank you. So the Thurston EDC, our Inspire Conference is this Thursday, and so if there's anybody watching tonight that is interested in getting a ten dollar discount, they can just message me and I'll make sure that they get it. That's a great lineup of speakers for that, it's really women based, businesses focused, but men are welcome to attend as well. We're also going to pu- open up our Courage Awards and so like to invite Tenino to think about businesses who showed lots of courage this last year and staying open to apply for that. The Arts Commission, I'm trying to get with Jessica to figure out dates that work for both her and the commission members, so we can get our first meeting scheduled. The Washington State Arts Commission has selected Tenino for the thirteen thousand eight hundred dollar grant to do our flagpole project. So we'll get that and waiting for the contract to get here for that. Then we'll also be meeting with the, uh, Arts Commission tomorrow, the arts, in Washington State Arts Commission and the Department of Transportation to talk about the creative district signees and what that process will be and how we get them for Tenino. And then the creative arts market starts this Saturday and we're in the second Saturday of every month that's put on by Tenino Arts in cooperation with Tenino Creative District. And then lastly, I'm going to give you a VCB update and I'm going to present to you the brand new hot off the press brochure of experiencetenino.com and what's in it, and then on the back, backside is a QR code. So when people scan the QR code, it takes them to tenino dot, but experiencetenino.com, which is being managed right now by the Vision Convention Bureau in partnership with the chamber, we provided the information for them. And that's my update. Thank you George.
Thank you George.
Great report. Fire District Twelve.
Uh, the meeting's tomorrow, but there's something that I went to, uh,
Thank you George.
The Fire Chiefs Commissions Association. And something that was brought up at the, uh, conference that I went to at the beginning of the year was, uh, the, the amount of suicide that we're starting to see in the fire, fire departments throughout this, throughout the country. Uh, and how we might be able to start working to alleviate some of that. It's a little bit more difficult for smaller departments because we don't work as teams, you don't have just four or five guys on an apparatus. Uh, we have to work everything. Uh, so what Thurston County's starting to do through the Chiefs Association is the, what they call a peers thing. And it's basically sort of if you've been to something, for example, I've been to, uh, a suicide uh, when I first, first started. But there's nobody ever to talk to about that, and I was okay, but there was, but there wasn't anybody back then to talk to about that if you needed to talk to them. So we're putting something like that together, hopefully by, uh, by the autumn, that should be all in place. So if somebody from Tenino wants to talk to somebody, but they don't feel comfortable about talking here, and this is for the police, uh, police departments as well, you can pick up the phone and call one of the district, uh, one of the other districts and just ask for somebody that's part of the peers program and you'll be able to talk to them about that. And hopefully get a lot of that stress taken care of, this, this where you don't self, start self medicating with alcohol and drugs and stuff like that. Until you ruin your, until you end up ruining your career or just ruining yourself. Uh, I found that very interesting, I, when I, when I went to the conference and then I found it even more interesting when, uh, I went to the Chiefs Association meeting and found out that that's what's happening in Thurston County. That's what I have for Fire District Twelve, an hour meeting is Thursday.
Thank you John.
You're welcome.
Library. Linda the librarian. It's nice to see you.
Thank you, it's, it's so different to be in person, it's lovely to be in person, so. Uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, hello, um, from beside the desk instead of through the screen. Um, nothing huge going on, uh, at the library right now. Um, but I did want to mention that's a new resource that has come out that debuted yesterday. Um, is called the Checkout Washington Adventure Pack. And if you recall, we do have a birding backpack that's available for checkout as well. This one is similar, except that instead of bird identification guides, it has, um, some animal and, um, flora and fauna guides, uh, included in it, does, does have good quality binoculars as well and a Discover Pass to use. So these are able to be put on hold, um, uh, but there are no renewals of three week checkout period, so. A nice resource to have for people who don't want to invest a lot, but want to experience some of the, um, great viewing that we have around here in nature, so wanted to let you know about that. And something that we're not going to be having housed at our library, but I wanted you guys to be aware of, is that there's a pilot program with the, I believe it's the State Department of Fisheries to provide fishing equipment to checkout. And Mountain View Library is the only one that has it in place at the moment. But it'll be coming soon to the Tombwater Library, which is why I mentioned it here, because it's not too far of a drive if somebody is interested in picking up the fishing kit to go fishing. Um, and last, just kind of administratively at the library, um, we had our new employee begin on April sixteenth, his name is Julian and he, uh, Julian Warmington, and he is coming to us from Pierce County Library System. So of course there's a learning curve as far as learning all of the timberland system and policies and how we do everything. But it's very nice to have somebody who has library experience, because there are certain things that are in common to everybody, so we don't have to worry about that part of it, so. He's, um, uh, working out well and it's nice to be fully staffed at the library. And the other thing administratively is that we are preparing for a summer library, uh, program. And, uh, we are, I am working on getting an outdoor performer. I'm meeting with Jessica Reese Rush on Thursday to talk about some things happening in the park. And hopefully we can hash out some dates and figure out how to make it happen this summer, we're still looking, doing things outdoors or passive programs, um, in the library and moving ahead towards September being back to normal, I almost hate to say it, in case something happens, but being, you know, back to our normal in-person programs at the library, which would be fantastic, so unless there are any questions, that's pretty much all we have.
Don't you mind if I talk to the visitor prevention girl, because she may have a whole lot of ideas that you could use at the library, uh, for what you were just talking about? And a lot of times, if you're, if it starts growing out, then I do, which is from either type as well.
Great, and I was just thinking I need to get some of those brochures from George to be able to have them at the library for people to pick up.
Thank you Linda.
Thank you.
Museum.
So I'm not really sure what to talk about now or, um.
Put on your museum person hat.
Okay, I'm not anywhere else in the agenda, just pointing out.
So we'll just put you on your museum person hat and then you take that off and put on your park coordinator hat.
Okay, but I'm not in the agenda.
And we're going to fix that.
Okay. Just checking.
Yep.
Um, so yeah, um, the museum is currently closed, we're taking the month to do some renovations. Um, this is kind of a park thing, because it's part of the, um, grant and the city helping us out with, um, the building, but it's, I'm also there about, doing some of my hours as the museum director, so it's kind of a, a strange little conglomeration at the moment. Um, so we've, uh, just give you an update on what's happened, is we've got the ceilings painted. Um, we had somebody do that for us and the walls are, um, currently, probably got one more day of work doing that. That's mostly been me and volunteers, mostly, my, my, my mom has been helping me. So, but it looks, it looks really good, I mean, the walls look really good, the museum is a hot mess because everything is moved and piled up and, uh, gives me anxiety, but, um, so as the, uh, the, the museum also, uh, received a grant. And so we're going to be spending some of that money on, uh, improving our displays, and so I'm hoping that by June we'll open back up with kind of like a whole unveiling, new and improved museum, at least half the museum, so. Um, the floors should be starting soon, so we'll have the floors done. The sinks are currently getting powder coated, uh, sanded and powder coated, and those will be coming back and reinstalled. We'll also be doing the bathroom floors, I'll probably be doing that, um, the windows are going to be done, we're going to have an exterminator come in. So there's, there's just a lot happening there, so. That's pretty much my report, unless you have any questions?
Any questions for Jessica? Thank you. Tenino Community Service Center, uh, they are having an event coming up. Gosh, the date escapes me, but it is the end of this month. Uh, look on their Facebook page, but they'll be having a, a, a large opening of some sort. Uh, Civil Service Commission. Sir, have you guys met?
Getting tired.
It's like being in a Catholic church.
We have. Uh, yeah, we have a commission now of three. Uh, we're in search of a chief examiner secretary, possibly, very small, uh, time commitment would be required, we've had two successful meetings. We have one list that's been certified. We have one person that's. We have, we have one person that was hired off that list, he's sitting in here today and I'll get around to introducing him on the next trip up here. Um, and we have one more on the list that has been through the backgrounding process and Mr. Mayor and I are discussing what onboarding, one more would look like in comparison to the new commitment from our school. And that's a work in progress, we've got about a two month timeline, we're working on with that. But yes, thumbs up on the Civil Service Commission.
Awesome, thank you. Facade Improvement Grant Review Committee.
We met, um,
We gotta get in the habit of pushing the buttons.
We voted on all of the applications and they were all approved. Um, everybody is really excited about what's going to happen to the front and the sides of some of the buildings here, so.
Awesome. Chief of Police.
I promise this is it, and Civil Service Commission was on this list. Okay, so, uh, I started the application process for the donation of a brand new patrol car. Uh, also from the Nisqually Indian Tribe, I'll keep everyone informed as to our progress on that. Obvious benefit of that is it's going to relieve that from our two thousand and twenty-three budget, which it's a huge amount. Um, if everything goes how I planned, um, it looks like we could move our vehicle replacement schedule to once every other year as opposed to every single year in an effort to save some money. So, uh, I'd like to introduce Officer Alec McClelland. He's our newest hire, he's off of FTO. Couple fun facts I'm going to steal from him, I didn't know if he was going to get to him, Alec was, uh, in the United States Marine Corps, worked in fueling. Alec was uh, in the United States Marine Corps, worked in fueling. Um, is a former golf pro, legitimate golf pro.
Pro?
Yep.
Wow.
Uh, he said to me that he wants to be in Tenino long enough to where they add a D to the end of McClelland Street. So.
Quote, quote him on that.
Okay. He's recently signed a lease and lives in our city. So a couple of quick comments. We're happy to have you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me tonight. Um, my full name, Alec McClelland. I've been in law enforcement for about four years now. I started, uh, started life as a police officer in uh, city and the, at the tribe in the Squawee where I knew Chief Otterer from. Um, then I went up to um, the city of Arlington. I worked there for a little bit. And then uh, Chief Otterer told me that he got chief down here, so I came running. Um, I lo, I love working with him. He's got a lot of plans and I look forward to policing the city. I've been here for nine weeks now. I've already had a lot of fun. Do it, I'm really happy to be back in a small area. Arlington was not very small. So it's good to be, you know, talking with people instead of just another face. So.
Awesome.
Yep, two kids, uh, four-year-old and a one-year-old. Uh, they're, they're both boys, so they're handsful. I know what my dad's going, what my dad went through with us, with us boys when we were younger now. Uh, got a wife of six years, uh, served in the Marines for six years uh, as a, as a bulk fuel specialist. And yeah, uh, ran out of money when it came to getting into tournaments and travel for the professional golfing. Went down to California for a little bit on the Pepsi Tour and uh, just ran out of money. Had to come back and decided to get into law enforcement.
Jason's probably gonna wanna go golfing with you.
Absolutely.
History, Bob.
Oh, man.
And a killer sense of humor.
Sure. Sure.
Awesome. Does anyone have any questions for Officer McClelland?
I have a suggestion.
Absolutely.
Can I, there you go.
Go to the Olympia Golf and Country Club and ask for the pro there.
Okay.
He happens to be my cousin.
Oh, very well.
Yeah. Mark Bershauer is his name.
Mark Bershauer.
Really, Linda?
I'll go ask.
I deal with him all the time for deliveries.
Yeah, that Mark is Colleen's grandson.
Oh, small world. Yeah. Well, no, yeah. Any other questions for Officer McClelland?
Uh, I just want to say thank you for your military service, even though it wasn't Navy.
Well, hey, the Marine, we needed the Navy because we're not smart enough to be medics or religious enough to be, to have chaplains, so.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
The Director of Public Works just got back from Cabo, so he is still too tanned to hang out with us. Code Enforcement Building Inspector will be at the next meeting. City Attorney, Clerk, Treasurer, Mayor, that's me. Uh, I, I was really happy. I caught uh, former Mayor Ken Jones in the parking lot at the, at the post office. And I've been really excited to be able to show him City Hall renovations. So Mayor Jones was mayor for 11 years here and uh, he recently moved out of town, but he still makes trips in. And so I brought him and his wife over and gave them a tour of the City Hall renovations and they were like, they were floored. Yeah, it was, it was pretty cool. He was like, he was impressed. Uh, so that, that felt good. That was, it was nice to see uh, former Mayor Jones. Uh, Congresswoman Strickland and Commissioner Mejia came down and spent a couple, a good four or five hours here in Tenino. Uh, I gave them a presentation on, on what we're doing here in Tenino and we did a tour. Uh, we were gonna go to Don Wans for guacamole, but they didn't open up soon enough. So we'll bring Congresswoman Strickland down again with promises of guacamole. We went out to the Ag Park site and we talked about, you know, things that are going on in Tenino. She talked about things that are going on at the, in the federal government and uh, you know, things like the uh, you know, the sales tax changes. You know, she needed to hear from a community like us that when you change uh, how sales tax is generated through e-commerce, how much it affects the community where traditionally somebody would go buy, you know, a laptop at Best Buy in Olympia and all the sales tax revenue would go to Olympia. Now you buy it on Amazon from your home and the sales tax revenue is captured by your local jurisdiction. And that has, that has, that has been a, a big game changer for us in, in as far as how much tax we collect and what we can provide our community. And we talked about roads and bridges, of course, and difficulties with uh, obtaining federal uh, monies to be able to uh, take care of our infrastructure. And we had a good meeting. Commissioner Mejia, our, our county commissioner, she will be down in Tenino on uh, May nineteenth at two-thirty at the Sandstone Cafe to do a coffee talk. So if you're available to go sit down with Commissioner Mejia and uh, the county manager, Romero Chavez, they will be there, meeting with folks and, and drinking coffee. And it should be interesting and fun. Quarry House is under renovation, as we know. Uh, it's, it, it's a very old building, so as they pull things apart, they learn things every step of the way. Uh, we found uh, several cat skulls. We've found evidence of rodents over the years. Uh, we found places where uh, it was a residence for a while and the, the family that lived there when they did renovations, they used firewood instead of two-by-fours to build walls. So, you know, it, it's an old building and as you tear it apart, you encounter new things. Uh, much of the floor underneath the kitchen area was lo, basically logs on firewood. And it was pretty shaky, but they've, they've shored things up. They've gone underneath the quarry house and they've done a considerable amount of work to uh, make it uh, structurally sound, sounder. And uh, we're continuing forward on, on the renovations there and we're gonna preserve the quarry house. I gave you an update on the pool and our difficulties with the Department of Health. Uh, we have a three-week to six-week window, which we have been assured our construction permit will be approved or reviewed. Not necessarily approved, they'll review it. There may be comments when they come back and, you know, they may be, well, you're using a two-inch line. You need a two-and-a-half inch line there. So uh, we are, we are continuing to wade through the, the, the red tape. Are there any questions for me? Thank you. Be that.
Uh, I was just informed that they hadn't paid for their membership yet, so I reached out to Kateri. She was uh, going to reach out to her boss, so. Yeah, for the chamber. So I gave them all the information where he can send the check to and everything, so.
Okay. Solid Waste Advisory Board.
Mostly they've just been working on repairs because parts have been on backorder. So they've now come in and they're repairing the compactors so they can keep up with it and not end up like Tacoma.
Thank you.
Other than that, they're progressing on the um, Turning Rochester site into a transfer station.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Clam. Tenino School Board. Yeah, you guys been in the news. How are things?
It's great. So um.
And let, we have a, we have a school board member as well.
I know, and I saw her earlier today. So uh, the Tenino High School had several applications for the principal position and they picked their top three and they had their interviews today. And then we got to have a little meet and greet, so parents got to come in and hear each one of them come in and tell their story and um, learn a little bit about them. And we got to have a little bit of a voice. We were able to kind of um, you know, say what we liked about them, how, how we think that they'll work for our district. So one thing I can say about all three of them, which I liked all three of them, they all had the same common goal and um, just different styles, but I think whoever they choose is gonna move the high school in a positive direction. So me having two in high school right now, um, I'm pretty excited about it, so.
Do we know the name of the three?
Yes, I have them right here. One of them was actually a Tenino uh, graduate, class of eighty-eight.
Mm-hmm.
Um, his name is Scott Hyder, H-Y-D-E-R.
There were two Scots, right?
Yeah. And then there's Scott Embry and then a Thomas J. And they're all currently principals in their districts. But they all come with really good backgrounds. Um, they spoke really well. Um.
Is that J-A-Y?
I'm, I'm sorry. It's J-A-Y is his last name. Thomas J. Yes. There you go. Think of Jason.
All right. Any other, anything else from the school board? Jessica, do you have anything to add? Rachel?
No, just, just one more little thing. So um, in our last meeting, I was mentioning that the band went to Long Beach in the parade. And we won the award for first place in our division. So for a one-eighth school, we got first place. So that's.
Awesome.
Pretty exciting. And so um, this coming Saturday, we'll be in Squim and I'll be right there cheering them on, so.
And the baseball team is.
They went to districts, yes. Um, and soccer, boy's soccer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Did you, did you say his name was?
Uh, I think so. I, I have to, I don't have the game scheduled, but yeah. Yeah.
Is, is his name Thomas J. or J. Thomas?
Thomas J.
Okay.
Mr. J.
Mr. J. Yes.
It was lovely to hear the band going down the street.
I know.
I like that.
I know. Yeah, they've been working really, really hard. Yeah.
Okay. TRPC, we heard from them last meeting, unless there's any updates?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Transfer Policy Board is tomorrow morning. Thurston Regional Planning Council is our first live meeting. Uh, there was eight of us that showed up. Everybody else went and went uh, through the Zoom process again. Uh, we're expecting that to change on our next one. Uh, you'll be receiving the after minutes, uh, meeting notes as soon as I get them. One of the things that I did want to point out is we were talking about funding. We're always talking about funding. Uh, if you remember last year, I told you guys that we received 1.5 million dollars because somebody else was not able to allocate the funds that this, that the federal government gave them to do a project. If you don't get that, that job spiked, uh, that means you lose that money and you gotta get, they, they give it back and then find somebody else that is in a position to get that money used. Well, Thurston County is in that position. It hasn't been allocated yet. But uh, one of the, one of the things that years and years ago I brought up was on, on federal funding and it's helped with CDBG and a few other things is to make it so that we can change the requirements by funneling the money someplace else to take that, what I call stink of the federal government off. Uh, using federal money is easy to get. It is real easy to get, but try using it. That's the hard part. We've already had to give money back, what was it, seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars, something like that, Wayne, a couple of years ago? Because it was gonna cost us almost that much money just to use that. We didn't have it. Uh, big problem. Larger jurisdictions, they don't have that problem. They usually have the tax base to do that. Uh, we don't. So during our conversations, I brought up the fact that this has happened in the past and maybe that 1.5 million dollars, we can take some of that money, apply it someplace else so that the federal requirements are, are released from it. And South County uh, jurisdictions can use that money. You know, 1.5 million dollars, if that was all given to us, and it probably won't be, uh, but if that was all given to us, that's a whole lot of roads that we can get taken care of down here. A lot of them. Uh, so I brought that up. We had a couple of people agree that that sounds like a good idea. Whether it goes anyplace or not is a whole nother thing. Uh, the, this, the problem with it though, is that if it doesn't happen this year or next year, by the third year, all the jurisdictions that have lost money because they weren't able to get the jobs started, uh, are gonna figure out how to make that work and all, and that money will dry up and we won't have it anymore. So I'm trying to get that. I don't think we will, but I'm trying to get that, at least to get, get it in the mindset of the people that are, are handling the money so that maybe we can get some of that down here. Uh, that was to me the biggest part of the meeting. Uh, and again, I'll get you the after minutes report as soon as I get them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Legislature, I don't believe you would have a report, but as George mentioned, uh, Representative Peter Barna will be at the next Chamber of Commerce meeting, so everyone that can should try to attend. Public comment period number two, if there's any, sir.
Go ahead.
Were you bidding?
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta bidder, twenty-four, twenty-four. If there's anyone in the public like to provide public comment, please come forward and step, step up and do so at this time. You'll be given three minutes. State your name and address.
Keith Phillips, uh, resident of Tenino at four-four-nine, four-four-nine Fourth Avenue or Fourth Street in Tenino. And it's a just announcement, uh, the Tenino Stone Carvers are involved in reclamation or restoration of a monument at Grand Mount that was put up in nineteen eighty-nine. They're also uh, uh, putting up, uh, are involved in a large sculpture at the Teno, uh, Tombwater Falls Park. Uh, a Olympia Beer Logo Sculpture. And then uh, the uh, group will be rep, Tenino will be represented by the Tenino Stone Carvers at uh, the uh, Tacoma Highland Games up in Graham on uh, June twenty-second and twenty-third. And then, I don't know who to thank, but Eric Johnson, uh, Eric Heroes was at my house this morning interviewing me to complete the interview and it will be aired tomorrow night.
How'd that go? Was that fun? He's a nice guy, isn't he?
He is a very nice guy.
It's on Como.
On Como Four.
Yeah, so we got, we got. I, we got a, we got a hero, we got a hero among us.
Yeah, and I don't, it's probably you, Mayor.
Oh, I don't know. I was, I was, I was the hero last year. You're the hero this year.
Oh, well, I don't know how he got in touch with us, I guess, guys, but that's really nice for Tenino.
It's very cool.
We love Tenino.
Congratulations. Are there any announcements for the good of the order?
Yes, uh, on Jan, uh, June, there is, June sixth from five to eight o'clock, Thurston County Emergency Management Council is having their annual meeting. It's been a couple of years because of COVID. Uh, I will be attending this meeting.
Okay, June sixth from five to eight o'clock, the Thurston County Emergency Management uh, Systems is having their annual meeting. Uh, it's been called off for the last couple of years because of COVID, as you all know that. I've attended these meetings uh, every year for the last three, four years, representing uh, the city of Tenino. Uh, this year I'll be representing as vice council and uh, Fire Commissioner. Uh, so that's, that's pretty much it. I think anybody else, you all should have a notice on that. It says Economic Seminar Dinner Order. So if you guys wanted to come, just go ahead and let them know. Uh, I will be there. And that's about it. Oh, one more thing. Yeah, it is. That's who serves dinner. Uh, one more thing.
This is it.
Uh, so you'll like that. Uh, for the, for the First Respondents Potluck Barbecue, uh, I have live music. It's uh, Ty Messmer. He's got a, a, a bluegrass band and they're going to be uh, performing down there for about an hour and a half, two hours.
Cool. All right. Any further announcements?
Do you want me to do my report as an announcement?
Absolutely. Wait, were you, I thought you did the park coordinator report after your museum. I said, take off the hat and put on the other hat.
No.
Okay, go. You're up. Aw, don't feel silly.
I misunderstood.
Okay, but I, I made a note and we will make sure that park coordinator is added to the reports.
Well, I just kinda wanna let you guys know what I've been up to, so, cause it's a new thing. So uh, mostly uh, scheduling was the first thing I tackled, so leagues, baseball, soccer. Um, there was a lot of confusion going on between those things, so we just wanted to make sure that that was all um, being addressed, that everybody was on the same page, um, and that these teams could coexist on the fields that we have. Um, so, and then I've been coordinating events um, during construction like Mayfair and we also have a concert coming up on the books, um, SDP, Swap Meet, Oregon Trail Days, Tenino Railroad Day. Um, I'll be sitting down with Linda, as she mentioned, to, to uh, plan some more activities in the park. Um, and I'm talking to the high school band director about um, putting together a community band. So, you know, for all those adults that used to play in band, they can dust off their instruments. Um, and then having a concert in the park. Um, I'm also working on a history tour with Mr. Newguard, um, so, and that is gonna involve this building. It's, it's really actually a huge tour that he's planning, so it's gonna be at the park, all around downtown. Keith is involved, so they'll be going by the stone shed, or actually, they're gonna go out to the, to um, Hercules number one quarry where this building used to be located and visit there and the cemetery. So it's, it's kind of a big thing, um, getting the kids excited about their heritage here. So that's a culture part of the, the job. Um, so, and I'm also been looking at facilities and how we can uh, utilize them more, so like a better way to reserve shelters in the park. So if it's reserved, somebody comes along, they can't just like, start using it. It can have a sign on that says this is reserved for somebody else, cause we've had, I've, we've had that issue since I've been here, which was not very long. So I'm working on group camping, classes in the quarry house when it's done. Um, this space, I could see like baby showers and little weddings going on in here. Um, maybe a first aid class. So I plans for the website, um, to improve, to kind of advertise some of these things. Um, the big. Um, the bigger thing I've been working on lately is, um, the interpretive signs. So we've got three signs in the works. Um, the initial one is for, um, the Yelm Tonino Trail, or I guess it's Yelm Rainier Tonino Trail. But anyway, a lot of people don't realize that's the oldest, when it coming into our park is the oldest, um, railroad line in the Washington Territory. So they're riding and walking on a real piece of history. So we want to have a sign there that acknowledges that and tells some of the history. Um, one at the quarry pool, one at the, um, the quarry house. So those are, I'm working with the graphic designer on those. And then, of course, the museum project, which I already told you about, but that's take, that's like the last two weeks, pretty much everything I've been doing. Um, so, and I've been trying to connect with other parks departments to like learn how they do it and what they do, how they get the classes together, see if I can utilize some of the same teachers. Um, but what I'm discovering is this is a really busy time of year for those people and I'm having trouble squeezing in on their calendar at the moment. But that is something I'll continue to be seeking out and trying to, um, work with those folks on. So that's pretty much my report.
Awesome. Jessica? Keith, do you have a question for Jessica?
Yes. I have a question for you, uh, Jessica. When was Rob Newguard's tour with the kids begin?
Um, it's, it's not till June, so I, I'll get you a firm date, but we're talking about doing a practice tour.
Oh?
Um, on, let me pull out my calendar. On, um, the 28th of May.
28th of May.
Yeah, so we're, we're getting up on the last week of school, I believe, is when the actual tour is going to happen.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Jessica. Any questions? Any question for Jessica?
We got one more.
Okay.
Go ahead. Okay, uh, something I forgot to talk about a little bit earlier, I told you about the Piers Program and how, uh, we're trying to get to a point where we can talk to each other. Uh, I brought that concept here, uh, with our commissioners. We know each other by face. We know each other's names, but really don't know each other. So what we're going to start doing, and we'll, we'll come up with a date for our first breakfast, is, uh, to sit down as a group, not talk about business, but just talk about us, family, stuff like that, what we thought we would like to do, all, you know, just to get to know each other. The idea behind that is if somebody, if they need to talk to somebody, if I need to talk to somebody, we've got somebody that we can go to. I also believe that if you get to know the people that you're supposed to be working with, you work better with them. So, uh, Dan, I'll get with you probably Friday to let you know what date it is, since it's going to be all five commissioners. We have to put it in the, uh, the paper that we're meeting together, but it's not an official meeting type of a deal. It's just to get to know each other, so if anybody else wants to come and just talk with us, that's fine too.
Thank you, sir. Thurston County Veterans Council ha-, provided us with an announcement. Uh, for many years, our predecessors, the Thurston County Veterans Council held a memorial service to honor the sailors, Marines, airmen, soldiers and medical personnel who were lost at sea as a result of direct or indirect fire upon a vessel or an airship. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic in early March 2020, large gatherings of organizations, churches, schools and gatherings were discontinued for the, until, for the notice. There has been no waterside service for the past two years to honor those fallen veterans, our brothers and sisters in arms. We are deeply honored and pleased to inform you that on Sunday, 29th, May 2022, the Thurston County Veterans Council will once again be holding the Memorial Day Waterside Service. As veterans who live, work, worship and honor all members of armed services, wish to express our respects to all who get, have given the ultimate sacrifice, so we may live this, in this great nation. We have arranged for a short instrumental concert by the Department of Washington American Legion Band prior to the opening remarks. Organizational groups should have a spokesperson, make contact with a member of the American Legion upon arrival, so we may obtain the name of the group or vessel being honored. Flowers will be dropped or thrown into the waters at personal landing by service organizations and military units in attendance. The activities will begin at noon and are planned for approximately one hour. We encourage all participants and spectators to come dressed for typical Pacific Northwest spring weather. Looking forward to seeing as many of you that can attend. I have provided my contact information. In the event, if there are any questions, Catherine A. Olson, Thurston County Veterans Council Secretary, 360-239-6383. Uh, email is army91c72y92r@gmail.com. I do not believe we have any further announcements, so we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone.